Please come to order for the December 9, 2014 meeting, the special meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the December 9, 2014 special public meeting of the city council was postponed on Friday, December 5, 2014, on the building board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Item before you is a public hearing director of community development regarding 180 unit mixed-use project located at 515 West Broadway. One A is a motion approving stage two design review. One B is a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. This is a project that you have seen before at stage one. So at this point, we'll have Kristin Asp introduce and profile the project for you at this location, Broadway Pacific. I believe it's the current Office Depot site. And then we'll have the public hearing. Kristin?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of city council. American General Design is requesting approval of a stage two final design review for a mixed-use project at 515 West Broadway. The project site is located on the northwest corner of Pacific Avenue and Broadway within the San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment project area and Zoned SF MU. The 1.78 acre site consists of nine parcels and is developed with a single-story retail store, the Office Depot, a large surface parking lot, and a two-story apartment building and garage facing Kennelworth Avenue. Stage one design review was approved by city council on July 8, 2014. The proposed project is a five-story mixed-use building with approximately 18,200 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor and 180 multifamily residential units above surrounding a central courtyard. The building is tallest at five stories, starting at Broadway, and then steps down towards the north to four and three stories adjacent to the multifamily zone properties along Wilson Avenue. The developer has requested a density bonus for the project pursuant to SB 1818. By making eight of the units available to very low-income households, the developer qualifies for one concession. In this case, the developer is requesting an increase in the height and stories for the project to 65 feet and five stories, where 60 feet and four stories are permitted. The code requires 313 parking spaces. The project will provide 371, which is 58 more than code, located in a single-level underground parking structure, as well as at an at-grade and mezzanine-level area for parking. Two vehicular ingress egress points are proposed, one along Pacific Avenue and one along Broadway that would access the at-grade and the mezzanine level. Access to the subterranean parking will be provided from Kennelworth Avenue. An EIR was prepared for this project and circulated for a 30-day review period. The final EIR was prepared and addresses all comments received. Staff recommends approval of the stage two with conditions outlined in the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'd like to turn the rest of the presentation over to Rodney Khan and team to go over the project in more detail.
Going to open the public hearing. Mr. Khan, how much time do you and Mr. Dixon need to present?
Mayor Sinanian, 15 minutes would be sufficient.
Okay, 15 minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located on Brand Boulevard here in the city of Glendale. As Ms. Asp highlighted, we came before you on July 8 of this year. We printed, presented our stage one review and received your approval. Over the past several months since that hearing, we completed our environmental document, which was an EIR, which included everything from traffic to parking to noise to safety, just to name a few of the items that were analyzed. And we also held a neighborhood meeting to discuss our project. We presented it. We answered questions. We heard comments. We actually had a small group that participated. Some of the property owners to the north and some of the tenants to the north of our site came. We also had the church to the south and a small commercial establishment attended as well. We've made modifications. We've made upgrades to the project based on city council comments at the last public hearing, the neighborhood community meeting that we had, based on what we heard, and also based on city staff comments. Our architect will go through and highlight for you, showing you what we previously had, kind of a before image, and also an after image to show you the upgrades. But there are a few items that I'd like to highlight as well. First, as was mentioned, we've increased the number of onsite parking spaces. And the reason we did that was really twofold. One is we have a large commercial component, and we'd like to see a restaurant move into a portion of that space. And we needed to have sufficient parking for that. Secondly, as part of the neighborhood meeting, property owners to the north had mentioned they have some older apartment buildings that don't have sufficient onsite parking, and they actually use the street to park. So they talked about a restricted parking area, which we would support. But we also thought we want to make sure that the residents, the guests, and the tenants of our project will have more of this sufficient parking for our site. Therefore, we increased the parking that we're providing. Second item, the outdoor plaza area. We talked about, if you recall last time, there was a pork chop it was referred to, which is the small concrete corner, if you will, on Pacific and Broadway as you're heading south on Pacific, turning west onto Broadway. And that area was kind of an isolated area and really needed to be incorporated into the overall plaza, which we have done. We actually are activating that plaza. We're landscaping that area. We're providing well lighting. And it's very much a focal point of our project and a focal point for the building. Lastly, that I'd like to highlight is the amenities that the project offers. We talked about different interior amenities that were offered, but also some of the exterior amenities. We've incorporated or introduced a rooftop area on the south side of the project that will have a jacuzzi. We'll have an outdoor seating area that will be a common area for the project that's new and different than what you saw last time. Last, a very important component of the project which was mentioned is the inclusion of affordable housing. And that's eight very low-income units at no cost to the city of Glendale. And in fact, by doing that, we are able to increase our density. We did not maximize our density, nor did we allow for or reduce our parking concessions as we are allowed to. As you know, we are increasing our parking over what we suggested and proposed last time. We think by doing these items, we have a better project. And what I'd like to do is conclude my remarks. I'll turn it over to our architect, Kip Dixon. He'll walk you through the project. Thank you very much.
Don't kick the bucket yet. Good kick. Hi, I'm Kip Dixon with American General Design. When we last left off, we, and just a quick background in terms of the area and the surrounding in terms of off of Pacific and relative to the downtown area, and what's been described earlier in terms of the existing big-box retail and parking. Just to update in terms of those that may not remember, in terms of Pacific along this side, Broadway along this side, Kennelworth along there. Primary, two entrances, this location, for traffic in and off of the street, driveway in and off. And we'll talk about the parking for the residents off of Kennelworth in just a minute. Just to recap in terms of the zoning information that is there, and as Rodney spoke, we would be permitted to build up to 189 units. And what we're proposing is actually 180 units. And where we've taken those units away, we've taken them away at the back of the property where they would be most adjacent to the lower-density residential that's adjacent to us. At stage one, we had a number of comments that had come from folks. And the image that is up there behind is where our stage one proposal was. There was objections in terms of the large plaster surface that was here at the front at both ends of the project. And there was some discussion about how the sides of the building might relate to one another. And we took those suggestions to heart, as well as some comments that I believe came from city council in terms of trying to do something more prominent at both of the corners that gave a greater sense of arrival. And I'll show you how we've addressed both of those in just a moment. As Rodney spoke, there was some question about the development of some additional amenities. One of those amenities had to do in terms of the pork chop, as it's referred to down here. But I'm also going to describe the addition that was suggested that we have some amenities for the residents that would be rooftop and expand the outside space in terms of providing some spaces that would be, have greater sun during the winter time. And I'll show you how those are. We've incorporated bike racks and storage within the basement. Spoke about the rooftop deck, and I will show you those. And enhanced the overall design in terms of the development of, in particular, the southeast corner. But we did a similar treatment in terms of the southwest corner as well. Unified the design of the building with facades providing color acceding. One of the comments was that there wasn't sufficient color. We added an accent color within the palette. And you will see that we've taken the aesthetics that were on this side. It was spoken about by one of the council members that they felt that this should continue around the corner of the building, and we've worked to make that happen. And then consider the tree selection in terms of the residential courtyard. Previously, we had indicated that we were showing some palm trees. Council had indicated that they would like to see something that would grow taller and provide a level of privacy from one side to the other. So we've developed a scheme that will have deciduous trees that will still maintain sunlight into the courtyard during the winter time as much as possible, but be able to leaf out and provide a measure of privacy between the two. And then again, the discussion in terms of the corner, which we've addressed. One of the issues that came up from talking to the community group was concern about the back wall of the building. And while the building, and I'll show you how it does step back, they had come to us and they had asked whether we could provide a significant landscape buffer on the five feet that were set back away. And they had suggested bamboo as being a material that would go there. Our landscape architect has an alternate proposal for something that would be evergreen, but would be less invasive in terms of not only our property, but their property. Mixed-use project, 180 units, as mentioned. 313 parking stations, spaces required. At stage one, we were showing 330, and we've now boosted that up to 394 spaces. In addition, the open space was 2,500 square feet, or 25,000, excuse me, required. We were showing 29,000. We've actually now boosted that up to over 48,000 square feet of open space on the site. At stage one, we talked about previously that the character of this portion of this and this portion of the building, some people felt that they were not compatible and that this element was too large in terms of its materiality. And working with staff, what we've done is that we've developed a little bit more character on this side. And I'll show you where the accent colors come into play. But we've carried that around the corner and really emphasized the corner of the building so that it becomes a visual landmark as one comes down Broadway from the east approaching the site. Project information, 18,000 square feet of commercial residential, 205,000, so a total building area of 223,000. Sizes of our units, we consider to be large units. We prefer, we feel that that's more appropriate rather than some of the very small units that we're seeing around town that are being developed. Studios averaging 750, one bedrooms at 900-plus, and two-bedroom units at 1,600. And you can see that the size, that there's a considerable number of two-bedroom units that have been incorporated within the project. Parking, as Rodney had mentioned, the required residential, 240. The required commercial is 73. Total of 313, and we're providing 394 spaces within the project. Open space, this shows simply the totals in terms of how we arrived at those. Ground-level plan. This is the infamous pork chop. And previously, this was simply a corner with an island. And as transportation and city recommendation, this is the configuration that staff decided on. And we've incorporated that at the corner. Our driveway is right-turn in, right-turn out only at this location, and exit only at this location. The residential driveway is on this side, and it is segregated in terms of the commercial spaces that are provided. Retail commercial spaces around the side, and then some walk-in units that actually occur along the Kennelworth site that remain from the previous scheme. We feel that it's important not to put a blank wall against the residential side there or commercial, but to actually have units that people can walk in on the street to make that street a bit more friendly. This simply shows the mezzanine that was included in order to provide us with some buffer in terms of parking as there were concerns that if we had a restaurant or a small market tenant within the building, we might not have sufficient parking. And we're trying to ensure that we don't get off-site parking, people parking in the neighborhood. This is the subterranean level, below grade. Open only to residents and will be gated access. Residents then have access up into the building. There was some discussion about the materials the last time we presented the project. And we're still using a pre-finished metal, an aluminum-clad window system, and a glass railing that has an obscure sandblasted pattern on it so that you can't see through it directly. One of the materials that we're using in a small amount was a corrugated metal. City council felt that that might have been a little too industrial. And so what we're looking at, excuse me, what we're looking at doing is we're looking at substituting that with a painted cement trow plaster that is similar to what we're using in other locations on the building. And then the addition is that we're using a composite wood siding that is developed out of recycled products. This is just a brief glimpse in terms of where we were at phase one. And as we've moved down, there's the inclusion in terms of an accent color that weaves through this, as well as the corners of the building have been modified. This is the Pacific site. And previously, the discussion was that wrapping this element around from the rear of the project may not be compatible with the front. So as you can see, what we've done is that we've brought that character around the side of the building and still maintain access in terms of this community space for the residents. This is a quick diagram that shows in terms of the adjacent properties, but it shows the step back that has been developed. And we've made further adjustments in terms of, as these units step back, in terms of expanding the landscaping that is at, between their deck and the rail so that individuals are not able to go up to the edge and peer over. Probably about three minutes. Rear of the building in phase one. And this shows it in terms of the adjustments that have been made to the character of the building, be a little bit more friendly to the residents. And then the landscaping. This is just a quick glimpse at the screening system that we're using on the corridor up there. These are the U-pines that our landscape architect has suggested would be more appropriate along this location. And then finally, this is the Kennelworth elevation. And the major changes on this side have been the adjustment at the corner and the incorporation in terms of color, of bright color that would occur down at the ground level. Conclusion in terms of rooftop area. We've added a dog run, and we've added public space up to the top of the roof. In terms of talking about sustainability, I won't go through all of these. But this project will meet the January mandate in terms of the Cal Green process. I'm not going to get into all of the details of the landscape plan. This talks about the pork chop in terms of the development of outside seating areas and benches and things with a series of lit bollards that'll go around the outside of that area. One of the things to make quick note of is that in our central courtyard, there was some discussion about adding additional water features in terms of handling the number of residents that are here. So we actually have two pools and two separate spas at this level. But one of the comments that had come from council was the desire to have smaller, more intimate seating areas. And we've incorporated that in the landscape. The view into that space at the other end. And there's a separate cabana space that is in the middle that bifurcates the space. Resident, or landscaping at one of the upper decks. And then finally, a landscape palette in terms of the rooftop. And what we have is we have a clubhouse room for the residents that are here with the spa. And then this goes up to the upper level in which there's restaurant, or I shouldn't say restaurant, there's cooking facilities and things at this level, as well as seating that goes around at the top of this, the little gate that then goes out to the dog run area. View to the courtyard. And then finally, that image. And I think I may have gotten in under my three minutes. Be happy to take any questions.
The trees and stuff that you're planting, the palm, for instance, in the front and inside, are you patting shrubs? Going to wait 10 years for them to grow? Or are you going to, in selected places, put in pretty good-sized trees and stuff already?
No, in the courtyard spaces on the inside, as well as out here, we're looking at bringing in large specimens in terms of what we will put into the planting bed right away. And we have a raised planter. And we also have the capacity in some areas to drop the slab slightly in terms of getting a deeper planting bed.
I hate to go into these ones where you have to wait 10, 15 years to see the growth.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a speaker who would like to come up on this matter, Paul Solomon. Mr. Solomon, how much time do you need?
Two minutes.
Five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Solomon. I'm the owner and administrator of Broadview Residential Care Center, which is an assisted-living facility directly on the corner of Kennelworth and Broadway. Next door to us directly is a nursing home, Broadway Manor. And across the street is a, another nursing home, Royal Palms. Our facility is licensed for 180 senior citizens that cross Kennelworth on daily basis to go to local stores, shopping, et cetera. At least 50% of them have walkers. They're very slow. And what we're concerned with is Kennelworth. It's a quiet street. There is hardly any traffic there, and our seniors can cross. By putting a garage entrance on Kennelworth and bringing in, and I'm speaking conservatively, 150 cars in and out, it creates a tremendous hazard to our residents. There is no traffic light on Kennelworth and Broadway. So therefore, it's very difficult right now. The nearest crosslight is on Pacific. There is a tremendous amount of traffic going down from the Galleria towards San Fernando Road and back and forth every day. A project of this magnitude would make it pretty dangerous, in our opinion, to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Does, Mr. Khan, do you want to respond to this in any way?
Mayor, members of the council, John Bagley and JV Associates. In response to the concern, Kennelworth carries somewhere about 600 vehicles a day on a regular basis, based on the council we've done. Kennelworth at Broadway is a four-way, is a three-way stop control. There's a stop on Kennelworth. There's a crosswalk that residents from the west side of Kennelworth can cross onto the east side. It is very similar to many of the other residential streets that they have, that we have, that does not have a traffic signal for, as a crosswalk area. The intersection of Kennelworth is also very close to Pacific to be signaledized. It's been looked at, I think, in the past. And at this point, when we looked at the traffic volume, does not warrant putting in a traffic signal. So the best we can do at this point, we can make sure that the crosswalk is properly striped and there is signage that appropriately identifies the crosswalks. Majority of the traffic that will go to the project will be making a right turn into Kennelworth based on our trip generation and assignments. So we believe it will still be a safe crossing, notwithstanding that you're dealing with seniors, and it's always more difficult for them to cross. Short of putting a traffic signal at Kennelworth, that which causes other issues with the traffic that is currently operating on Broadway, there is no other mitigation that we can think of at this point that can address specifically if there are crossings. And then most of the peak hour residents are crossing midday. Yes, I'm sure there's some peak hour walking that occurs. But it's a short distance also. It's a two-lane roadway. It is not a four-lane roadway that could become a problem for crossing distance.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have questions for the applicant? I don't know if I can, you know, maybe someone from staff can suggest if anything can be done, maybe the length of the green light, the crossing light can be lengthened.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment. There's nothing to say that in the future, once it's built and occupied, if there was a problem that we couldn't address at that time with whatever is the best mechanism to handle it, whether it be a stop sign or whatever. But right now, I can't see how you can solve that problem anymore until we get it in and see.
I think it's generally the approach that we would take. If you look at Kennelworth and Broadway there, in the longer term, before you would ever put a controller in there, as Mr. Weaver indicates, either the restriping, stop sign, and/or the bulbouts, as you're indicating. So you further shrink down the area across which you go. And then you can do stamped concrete as a crosswalk. So as the cars roll over it, it makes a different sound. And you know it is, and you know it's a crosswalk versus a streetway. All those kinds of things are the types of engineering tools that we use in other places. We certainly can hold open and would hold open if there is developed a problem here and do that and make that investment.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
I just want to, I'm looking at the EIR, and it says that the daily trips will increase by 900. So that's double.
900 spread over 24 hours?
Well, it says 75 a.m. peak hour trips will be increased by 75, will be increased by 93 in peak hour trips, and 902 daily trips.
That's in one-hour periods, and they wouldn't all be going at the same time. It'd be spread over the hour, so.
So if we have no.
It'd be pretty light.
If we have no questions of the applicants, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we can start.
I have a question of staff.
Of staff, go ahead.
So I have a question on the parking. Which staff member can best address that? So, okay. So the applicant says that they have, they're providing 394 parking. Is that correct?
Up to 394, correct.
Okay. And the applicant also said that that fully meets code.
Correct.
I heard him say that.
I'm sorry, what does that mean, up to?
Up to, there's a number of tandem spaces. The tandem spaces can't be counted towards commercial.
So it may be less.
So if, so if, and we suggested. So 371, 371 spaces, up to 394 if they were to utilize the tandem with perhaps a valet service to, for the commercial.
And I see that for their studio and one-bedroom units, they're providing one parking spot.
Correct. Correct.
Is that correct? But I also read further on that our code requires two parking spots for studio and one-bedrooms.
For SB 1818, they get the park, they get an automatic parking concession of one space for...
So we're getting parking concessions there. It's not like they're meeting, were it not for SB 1818, they would not be meeting the parking, sufficient parking per our code.
If you remove the SB 1818 component, correct.
Which is the state law, not a city law.
Correct.
No, I understand it's a state law, and this is, again, some of the problems that I've had with these projects, and we mentioned it last, two weeks ago, when we were talking about putting in a moratorium, is that we have builders who are maxing out, and maxing out, and then maxing out. So is that going to be enough parking? I mean, when we developed our state, when we developed our municipal code, parking, that wasn't a number that we picked out of the air, it was a number that was researched. I think even Mr. Bagdanian was involved in that, who's now on the other side. And we came to the conclusion, along with a vote of the city council, that two spaces for each studio and one bedroom would be the code, because oftentimes, those people living in a one-bedroom have two cars or more. So, so according to our voted-on, were it not for SB 1818 getting involved, this project would not have sufficient parking if we were to review it on its own.
If I may, this is, I'm Hassan Hagani. We actually did a parking study. We did not do that for this area. When we did a parking study, we discovered that, if you remember, we did that for the downtown, and we discovered that our code required parking was, in fact, way more than sufficient, and that's when we recommended to adjust the parking requirement for residential, urban residential areas such as downtown. We have not extended it to San Fernando Road. In fact, our study showed the opposite. Not that we need that, we showed, our study showed that our code required parking is too high, not too low.
So when you say "we," let me just get through this.
Meaning me, and it was me, under, done by me and the Public Works Department at the time, Mr. Bagdanian was actually in charge of traffic and transportation. We hired a consultant, we did an independent parking analysis, and we showed that, in fact, the parking requirement is lower.
That was not put before, that hasn't changed, though. I mean, council has not changed that.
No, we haven't changed it in the code for this area, correct.
So the recommendation to lower the parking would be coming from staff as well as...
In this case, it's SB 1818, just as a concession, we, SB 1818 changes the requirement completely.
Right, and that's the problem. I mean, my problem, I mean, let's just get down to it. The problem is that we're letting the developers come in, give us their design for the buildings, and with SB 1818, we're getting situations where there aren't enough parking for their units, they're going to spill into the neighborhood, and we're going to impact the neighborhoods. And that's the issue that I'm concerned with. And, you know, when the developer comes and says, "Oh, we meet code parking," well, there should be a little asterisk by that statement, meaning we're meeting the reduced code parking based on the requirements of SB 1818.
That's a well taken.
As well as anyone in the public that's listening to the representations. And that's a problem I have. You know that we're going to be severely impacted with the advent of these 4,000-plus units in the, in and about the downtown area, and...
Got it.
I mean, it's a problem, and this is why it's coming back to us. We asked you to come back to us with some sort of report on how the SB 18 is affecting our current standards, and this is certainly one of them. I don't think that there's any project that we've built that is overparked. I don't think there's any neighborhood that's come and said, gee, you know, look at, look what this, look what this building did, alleviated all the parking problems in our, in our neighborhood. So that's just, I just wanted to raise that issue, that that's an issue. And the other SB 1818 that they took advantage of was the height going from four stories to five stories? Is that correct?
They were eligible for one concession, so they did the heightened stories.
But the parking is a concession too, in effect.
The parking is a standard that doesn't count towards one of their concessions.
So it's that, plus a concession.
The way that SB 1818 works is that it automatically changes the standard, that's not a concession that they ask for. It changes the parking standard.
And what does, what does the city get for this? I mean, what are we getting?
Affordable housing.
Okay, so I think that sort of got lost in the whole conversation.
Can I ask a question about parking? All right, do you mind if I ask a question about parking?
No, please, go ahead.
My question is, and maybe it's to the developer, I know some, in some cases, apartment buildings have the flexibility that if somebody wants another space, if they're renting a one-bedroom, and you have the one assigned space, sometimes they'll come, they can come to some buildings and say, can I get an extra space, and they pay extra. Is that possible in your building? Does someone want to come up and just, it may not, I, I have no idea, so I'm curious. Or do they, you just say to them, sorry, you've got to park on the street?
Patrick Trachian, I'm the developer. No, in this case, we're actually providing more parking than the reduced version from the SB 1818. So we have parking that's not assigned, that could be leased out to someone else.
So if there was, if this became a problem, where you had a lot of people, you know, couples in a studio, and they had two cars, and they wanted the extra space, you could accommodate some of those people.
That is correct.
And you're, I'm assuming you would let people know that, so that they wouldn't be parking all over the neighborhood?
That is correct. I have to add, we do a lot of other mixed-use projects, and our experience shows that a lot of people tend not to use their cars, and with the new millennium generation, there's, there's less car ownership. So I don't expect that to be an issue in this case, but we have the extra parking.
Right, that's my other question. I mean, you made the point, I'm assuming that you, as a developer, you know you have a lot of competition in Glendale now with other buildings, that I'm assuming you wouldn't intentionally underpark your building, given that I'm a renter and I'm paying what's probably going to be a pretty decent rent, and I have the choice of all of these, as Mr. Najarian said, of 4,000 units out there. If I felt that I couldn't, I had the extra car and I needed to park it, I'd go somewhere else. So I'm assuming that you looked at this, you studied it, and you don't think that you're going to have a situation where your tenants need the extra parking, because you'd be losing those tenants, right?
I'm fairly confident. In fact, in some of the other municipalities and our neighbors, I wouldn't be allowed to put the number of parking spaces that we're adding in this one, because we would exceed the number of parking spaces.
So explain that. So in some cities, they have a cap, right? They don't want you to put this many spaces in.
That is correct. There's a maximum.
What cities are those?
Pasadena for one.
So Pasadena actually would make you have less spaces than where you're putting in this building?
In Pasadena's case, the minimum and the maximum is exactly the same number.
And Pasadena people seem to think that they're building pretty nice buildings there, right? I mean, it seems like a pretty desirable place to live.
If I have to answer the question...
I like Glendale more.
On the record, Glendale is better than Pasadena.
You got yourself in trouble last time by doing that with another city, didn't you?
That was East LA.
Now we're going to have a busload of Pasadena people coming here to yell at us, so thank you.
I, may I, I want to carry this one step further on the, thank you. You mentioned the tandem parking for commercial, what, how many tandem spaces are there for residential, any?
Yes.
They're all residential, there's no tandem.
Anyone could use a number?
Listen to his answer.
I don't know the exact number, but, but, but there are.
There are tandem.
There are some tandem parking spaces. It's in our slide.
Which cuts the number of parking spaces in half.
Even if we take all the tandem spaces, we still meet the SB 1818 requirement. So we went and added the extra parking spaces.
I don't know why, I mean, I don't know why you would say that cuts it in half. I mean, it's, it's, people can, you know, I, I come home first generally, I park, my husband always parks behind me, you know, and he leaves earlier, it's, I don't think that's such a huge deal personally.
Did this, the parking standards that the city of, our city, City of Glendale adopted, did that happen before or after SB 1818?
I believe the standards that you have preceded SB 1818, I think a lot of what we end up seeing in a lot of the neighborhoods that are so very congested, in our neighborhood, for example, as you drive down, call it, you get to Grand View, you get to some of the, the locations there just north of, and south of San Fernando Road, is that there was a time where we underparked a lot of these buildings, and in fact, aggregated apartment buildings on streets like Thompson, or Justin, or some of these other places, that probably should not have been converted from single-family residential to multifamily residential. The problem that we have is that there is a tremendous hangover that we're dealing with now because of land use decisions that were made in the 1970s and even 1980s. Those, those parking crises that are very real, and I have firsthand knowledge of them, those problems are not the problems that you're developing as part of the DSP, or this project for that matter, because here, you're actually making a parking standard because the pendulum swung the other way in the aftermath of the construction of those projects that people complain most about.
Right. But yet, what I'm saying is, what I'm hearing, some of my colleagues, Mr. Najarian says that, okay, we have a standard, but really, that standard is being circumvented because of SB 1818, because then they're not really meeting the standard, they're meeting a different standard. So the question is, SB 1818 came after the standard was adopted, that's my understanding?
That's right.
So we can have a hearing, we can ask staff to bring it back, and we can revisit this issue. I'm not saying that I'm for altering in any way. All I'm saying is that if it's an issue, we can talk about it. Right now, as to this developer who's had the notice that they've had as to what the standards are today in the City of Glendale, somehow using SB 1818 as, oh, wow, you know, they're not really meeting a standard. I mean, they're meeting the standard that there is in existence in the City of Glendale, so that's the way I see it.
We're exceeding the parking.
Yeah, you're exceeding, yes. I'm saying you're meeting the minimum and you're exceeding. Is that it?
For questions.
For questions.
That's it for my questions.
Okay, so can we close the public hearing at this point? All right. Ms. Divine, are you finished? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing. Okay, it's closed now. Who wants to go first? Mr. Weaver?
Okay, you know, it's, it's like this case and many others that we've dealt with over the years, at least I've dealt with, and will deal with in the future, including tonight. You can't satisfy everybody, you know. There's always going to be some people that will object with legitimate concerns, but fortunately, you elected the five of us to make decisions for the community, so that's the way it goes. My comments are, I like the revisions enormously, what they've done. I know I asked for some changes, and they've been done. I'm glad that we don't have that island at Pacific and, and Broadway now. I couldn't ever see why that turn was there. Done a good job putting more landscaping in, that restaurant, whoever be there now, will have a much bigger buffer zone, it'll allow for more outdoor dining. It'll be an attractive focal point if you're coming west on, on Broadway. And I like the articulation that's been done on the different phases of the project on all sides. It's much better articulated. I like the setbacks more in the back, separating out the, the separation from the single family to the, to the, to this kind of project. That was a concern we've had on all the downtown projects that are facing onto Central on the west side. Stepping down, whatever development it is, so you don't have a wall staring at you if you're in a single-family house. And it's, I believe it's also reduced the shadowing effect on those single-family homes. The landscaping will do a lot, especially if they don't pa, plant five-foot-high shrubs, but put in more of the specimen type to provide closer, quicker shading, privacy. I like the rooftop, of course. I always liked the rooftop articulate, or what you can furnish up there on top, that, I'm pretty sure at that location, the view will be clear down to LA. There's no, nothing on the other side of the street that's probably ever going to interfere with that site. It'll be a nice place to go on a nice, warm evening after the sun sets, look at the lights of downtown LA. You can't beat that. Obviously, you're going to allow pets in this thing, and I like, I like dogs and cats, so I'm fine with that. What else? You have the commercial in there, which I hope will activate that more. I've been in all, all the rest homes in that sector down there. If it becomes a problem with Kennelworth, as I said, that'll be something in the council and staff will have to look at in the future. State, prepare everybody, there will be traffic during construction. In order to build this, they will have to tear down the old buildings that are there, and that means there'll be trucks maybe in the street. And when they dig for the garage, you'll have to have trucks there to excavate the earth, and they will have to have concrete trucks there to pour the walls, and then there will have to be trucks there to bring in the materials to go up with the heights. So I can hear it now, look what you've done. You've created all this noise, all this traffic, what's this city coming to? Any of you that live in a house in Glendale know that it didn't get built without trucks being in front of the house, creating noise and delivering materials. It's just a necessity of moving ahead. This street is a high-density used street eventually, zone commercial. I don't see any of the restrooms going, going away at all. They're there to stay, as far as I'm concerned. But from here, if you live there, it's just an easy walk from there to the Galleria. Why would you want to drive a car from here to the Galleria, two blocks away, or the Americana? It's going to be great in terms of that, and with all the amenities in it, great. So I'm trying to find a negative, and I, I can't. It's zone for it, the developer's bought the property, he has a right to develop, and I think he's been sensitive to what the council has raised in this case, so I'll be supporting it.
Ms. Divine?
Well, I wasn't on council when stage one was discussed and approved, so therefore, although the design appears to be very nice, I'm going to abstain from this vote. As far as the certification and the adoption of the, of the EIR, and the adoptions of the statement of overriding conditions, there are seven, seven significant and unavoidable impacts noted in the EIR. Two of them, two of them are life safety issues, cumulative fire service impacts and cumulative police service impacts. And now, in the override, in the, the benefits for overriding these unavoidable impacts are all economically driven, and I cannot, with a clear conscience, okay or approve this EIR when they are, it is telling me that police and fire response times are going to be delayed or longer for, for any reason. And so I'm not going to be able to, I will not be approving the EIR, and therefore, and I am abstaining from the vote on the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I voted for the stage one design review, but that was pending the environmental documents, the EIR. And the EIR has come out, and I have read the EIR, and Ms. Divine is correct, there are seven areas with significant negative impacts that cannot be avoided on this project. And the important ones are fire response, police response, one that's important to me is recreation. This project is paying the subsidized park and library impact fee, it is not paying the full freight. As a result, our parks and our libraries are going to be impacted negatively by the additional strain on this. And to those that say, well, it's just one little building, well, add up the three, excuse me, add up the 4,000 units that we're putting in the City of Glendale, and that's going to create a heck of a strain. So again, in good conscience, I cannot support this. I could support it if it was a less dense design. I could even support it if there were greater low-income housing, there's only eight units put in, so for the good of the public, if the developer were to put in 30 units of low-income housing, I could possibly see my way through to supporting this. But as it is now, the EIR is a black-and-white document, a setting... But as it is now, the EIR is a black-and-white document, setting forth the significant negative impacts that this project has, and I cannot support it.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Ms. Friedman?
Mr. Ochoa, could you explain the police and fire response times in the EIR and tell me how this project could have such a huge strain on public safety?
I would venture a guess that most of the, most of the projects that you have seen and you have approved have the very same language, and the idea being that we are not going to, as a matter of any of these projects, build any more of fire stations or police stations in these areas. We will make sure that we hit our response times through the calls that we monitor, both for Party One, Party Two, Party Three. We have 17,000 calls in the city, and if you look at our response times, we've been able to sustain them over a long time. That's why we give you the performance indicators, and you can follow along over the course of a year. What we do is make sure that we reallocate where we station units and how we deploy those forces. But I wanna make sure the council is clear, if you have a project with 10 units, or 20 units, or 30 units, or whatever the case might be, it's going to have an unavoidable impact in solid waste management, because there's somebody now throwing away trash that was not there before. That is unavoidable, because that person is going to generate trash. That person may generate a call for 911. That's going to have an impact. Now, you could venture, you could argue that, and not to pick on Mr. Solomon, just because he's here, if you look at who is calling 911 for EMS services, you are going to find that it is coming from our number of assisted-living facilities. That's not an indictment of assisted-living facilities, that's because they need EMS services, and we roll on those. When you look at the number of 911 calls that are coming from the ISIS apartment building, they're relatively minimal, if existent at all. Yet the development of that project, similar to the development of this project, will have an impact, an unavoidable impact, on the service level. And it's up to you as policymakers to be able to look at the services that you provide, the deployment of resources that we have, and determine, is that jargon and terminology, notwithstanding, is that suitable for what your vision of the downtown is supposed to be?
So you're saying there's nothing unique about this project that's making it somehow dangerous?
No, ma'am.
So that argument, any project then, if you were to vote based on that, you would have to vote no on any new project in the city?
Effectively.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
You know, I take issue with this whole discussion. The issue is whether it's a significant unavoidable impact, and a 10-unit building, although it will create an impact, is not creating a significant impact. And if what you're saying then is that, is that the, this unit, and maybe ISIS, as you referred, is not gonna create the calls for police and fire, then the entire EIR is flawed, because the consultants that someone is paying big money to is coming up with those numbers and giving them to us. So we should ignore that? Is that where we're at here?
No, sir. What I'm telling you is that under SEQA, they have to prepare that document, and under SEQA, they have to give you an estimate of what the impact will be. Those units will generate some degree of services. So you're talking about the discussion, for example, if, this is something that comes up every now and again with respect to affordable housing. Affordable housing units generally are going to have, families are going to have households. Those households will put a greater strain on our level of services. Yet the council, if you were to increase the number of affordable units in this particular project, or any project for that matter, you are making a policy decision that in the interest of providing affordable housing, you are willing to put a greater strain on parks and library services, because the policy priority of providing affordable units outweighs that. And the EIR is documenting for you that it will, in fact, have that impact, have an impact. And you, at the end of the day, I tell the council all the time, you set the tone, what do you want this place to be? And if the vision is to create these walkable spaces, the downtown, the San Fernando corridor of which this particular building belongs, if that is the vision for those locations, then that's the council's decision, or, or not.
Okay, but those are two things you're talking about. You're talking about creating a decision on overriding concerns. You're addressing the overriding concerns, is this the kind of city that we want? But Ms. Friedman says, is it really true that this is gonna strain our fire and police? And you said, no, it's not going to. And I disagree, because it is going to, and this is what it says. Now, if she says, I know it's gonna strain fire and police, but I'm willing to take that risk anyway for a more excitable 18-hour downtown, then that's my decision. But please, we shouldn't minimize the findings of this EIR, that it's creating an impact. Because if it is, then we should just throw this off the ledge and not even read it.
And I'm not minimizing it, sir, but what I am saying is that every improvement that you make has an impact, and it is never going to be, in a place as dynamic as this, it is never going to be a simple case of yes or no, black or white. You are going to look at whatever the impacts are and decide, as you ask your fire chief, as you ask your police chief, as you ask me or Mr. Agani, is this impact, can it be absorbed? And what we are recommending to you, vis a vis this particular project, is, yes, we can absorb this project.
Well, is there anything to prohibit us later from hiring more police or fire if we needed to?
No.
I mean, if we said, because we've added 150 new units, all of a sudden we can't maintain our calls, couldn't we bring on more police and fire to handle that?
If you so chose and decided...
If we thought we needed to?
If you thought you needed to and chose to invest in those services versus other services, yes, you could, if you felt that was the right thing to do.
I just wanna add, and I don't wanna make this a debate at all, I think that the operative word here is cumulative impact. And, and not to make light of this, but, you know, you can only put so much sand in a sandbag before it bursts, and we keep adding and adding and adding, and we're gonna reach a point where, you know, our police and fire are already strained, stretched to the limit, and I think this is a legitimate concern.
Mr. Mayor, may I weigh in?
Yes, go ahead, please.
On this, as I've said before, I worked on environmental documents for 40 years, I understand cumulative impacts, and the reviewer of the final EIR, or the EIS, or SEQA, has to make a decision, well, can I live with the unavoidable impacts? I look at this project, as I do all of them, and I says, well, the project has to meet all current state codes. In terms of the fire department, well, every unit, I'm sure, has fire sprinkler system and other mechanisms to protect every resident in there. What are the odds there's gonna be a fire in one of the units above with fire sprinkler systems in? Very low. If there's gonna be any call for fire, it'll be for paramedic services, but that applies to any place in the city, and you don't know when that's gonna hit on anyone, you can't put a judgment call on that. For police, everyone that I've been to that has opened of late, you've had security measures, you can't get into the residential components without having a key or something to get in. So where would be the calls for the police? Well, husband's wife, beating a wife, or the other way around, or is it on the commercial on the first floor? I don't know. It has a risk, yes, but I look at the cumulative impacts on this structure, or any other new ones we're building, and say, I'll take the risk. I think it is not gonna be a major problem. But the EIR must identify cumulative impacts of the whole city, and then leave it to us whether we'll accept them. I've seen those kind of things happen over 18 years here, where we've said, okay, we acknowledge, we understand, it could be a problem, maybe not, but we'll accept it.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Friedman, I know you've been interrupted.
No, I'm good.
Enough times already, I'll just grant me two minutes. You know what I have a fundamental problem with is, apparently, the city and decision-makers, you know, they wanna talk the talk, but they don't wanna walk the walk. Downtown-specific plan was an embodiment, you know, it was an embodiment of a vision for what Glendale, downtown Glendale is supposed to be. I mean, it was supposed to become something, right? And the people who made the decision decided that it's gonna be this thing, we're gonna develop it, we're gonna add, what, 6,000 units more? Okay, so now we're at 4,000, and all of a sudden, the issue of cumulative impact is becoming just so scary and just so horrendous that police are not gonna be able to function properly anymore, you know, there're gonna be fires raging all over downtown, and they're strained, and, oh my God, what are we gonna do? So you're telling me, when 6,000 units, in essence, were being approved in this relatively small geographic area, people didn't realize that there's gonna be an impact?
Yes.
Really? I'm sorry, I have difficulty believing that, or if they did realize and move forward, that's a big mistake, and if they didn't realize and move forward, that's, that says unflattering things about the decision-making process. I think this is a little overblown. I think there will be impact, of course there will be impact. How can there not be an impact? But like I said, like actually Ms. Friedman said, there's nothing preventing us from hiring more police, from hiring more firefighters, from, you know, allocating the appropriate resources to make sure that that impact is sustainable for the city of Glendale. So with that, Ms. Friedman, back to you.
I'm, I'm good. I think, I feel like we've seen this now a couple times, it's not a new project, and people who are watching this should know, this is not another project, this is one that we've been talking about for a while. And any project has impacts, absolutely, but I'm confident that if somehow this project caused our police and fire times to be decreased citywide, which I really doubt, we could hire more police or more fire. Same with any other impacts. We talked about building more Torem, and we all decided unanimously to not do that. So I don't know, you know, this idea that we can't build anymore because our police and, you know, we have police and fire at their limits, which I don't even know if that's true. I have a feeling if we asked the police chief or the fire chief if they feel that this is gonna prevent them from answering calls in the city, I'm pretty confident they'd say no, that they can handle it. It's a nice design, they've tried their best to accommodate the neighborhood behind them by stepping the building down. It's an upgrade to what I consider a blighted site. There's no way that site is gonna stay what it is now, which is a giant parking lot with a big box store. Big box stores generate a lot of traffic. If that store was a fully, a big box store to its potential, it would generate a lot more traffic than this building is gonna cause, a lot more. All you have to do is to go to any big box store, anywhere in Glendale or Burbank, and count cars going in and out. You've got cars going in every couple seconds in a lot of those stores, or any, every couple minutes, and there's no apartment building in the city that generates that kind of traffic. So really, this is, for the neighborhood, a much better project than they could get if it were to be another big box store, or something that was a lot of retail. That's what generates a lot of traffic. The ISIS building down the block on Colorado, which is right next to the highway on-ramp, you know, people were very worried about that, just stalling traffic coming on and off of the highway with all of the traffic going in and out. And I've spent a lot of time looking at that building, and I, my father stayed in that building for a week, so I was going in and out of that building. And you just, you'd have to sit there for a long time to watch people go in and out, because people tend to leave their apartment buildings in the morning, come back in the evening, that's pretty much it, maybe another trip or two. It's overparked, this project, something like 50 or more spaces, more than they're required to have. I don't believe this developer, who's a pretty savvy developer, was gonna underpark his building if he thinks that that's gonna cause a problem for his tenants. I don't know what happened in the '70s and the '80s, I'm assuming that people were just using a lot less cars then. I think some of those buildings are overcrowded now, there's probably two families living in apartments that were designed for one family, which is why we need these kinds of projects, because we have a crowding situation in the city. We've got a situation where you have a lot of people living in apartments that weren't designed for them. They need a place to live. Talked about it before, the region's growing, whether we like it or not. Let me tell you something, I'm not happy that LA County is gonna grow to the extent it's gonna end up growing in the next 10 years. It's gonna affect all of our quality of life, but it's gonna be worse if we don't allow people to have a place to live, if we force them to crowd into existing apartment stock. And I'm not just talking about Glendale, I'm talking about countywide. So this is really a designer view hearing and an EIR certification, there's nothing unique about this project in terms of the EIR that would make me single it out to say no, it's not a historic resource, it's not in a place that can't handle the traffic or any of that. It's a building that's certainly in scale with what's around it, in a very dense commercial area. I think it's an upgrade for the neighborhood, it's a very well-designed building. I think it's really been very generous in terms of what it's done for the neighborhood behind it, and the lower-scale residences. He's within his rights, he's within the code for, you know, he bought something with the promise from the city that you can develop X amount of units, and he's within that, so I don't see a justification for voting against it.
Mr. Mayor, do you need motions now?
I'll just take one minute, since my views pretty much reflect those of Councilmember Weaver and Councilmember Friedman. I think this is a good project for that location, finally getting these really high-quality projects in Glendale, and in those areas that need them the most. That spot is wasteland, and yes, Office Depot is there, and apparently some other business was there before it, and none of them work, none of them work, it's basically an empty parking lot. And this is gonna be a far better presence and far better contribution to the city of Glendale. So I don't wanna belabor the point, Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 1A and B.
Second.
May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Devine?
I'm abstaining on one and no on the other.
Thank you. So on 1A abstain?
Right.
Thank you. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
On 1B, Councilmember Devine?
No.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you. Whoever doesn't have to be here, doesn't have to be here anymore. What's next on the agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Just tippy-toe out, we got another item.
Number two is also a public hearing, Director of Public Works, continued from November 18, 2014, regarding conditional vacation of a portion of Laurel Street, Vacation Number 177B. 2A is a resolution ordering the vacation. 2B is a resolution adopting Plan Number 12-236.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Ochoa.
And I need to get a clarification from City...
Can we have silence in the chambers, please?
While folks are entering, just clarification from City Attorney and City Clerk, we also have the item that is the sale of city-owned portion of Laurel Street, that is a companion piece. Can we do both at the same time? Or do we have to do the sale and then the public hearing for the vacation? Or vice versa?
I don't, Mr. City Manager, I don't think we have to do one or the other first.
Would it make sense to do the sale first, then the hearing for the vacation, or the opposite? Oh, the vacation needs to go first? My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
We gotta vacate and then sell.
So separately?
We'll do them, yes, sir, we will do them separately with your indulgence, and as you have, and Mr. Kasakian has outlined, we'll bring up first the case...
Okay, very good.
For the vacation.
Very good. And I'll open the public hearing, and I will just mention for those who are here to speak on this matter that there is a sister, as was mentioned, there's a companion hearing that will go immediately after we close this one. So those who submitted cards, I don't know if you wanna speak on both items or not, but we'll take it one at a time.
We have a request from the folks at the Glendale Memorial Hospital to examine the vacation of Laurel Street. With that, I'll ask our Principal Economic Development Officer, Darlene Sanchez, to come forward, provide you the information, or is it gonna be Rubik? Oh, Rubik, I'm sorry, to provide you with the overview of the vacation, then we can hold the public hearing and move forward if it's the council's desire. Rubik?
Thank you, yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Rubik Bolanyan, Director of Public Works, City Engineer. Essentially, the item before you is a request by Glendale Memorial Hospital to vacate a portion of Laurel Street, which biceps Glendale Memorial Hospital campus, due to safety concerns. The vehicular traffic on Laurel is predominantly related to hospital visits, and pedestrian accidents do still occur. The proposal is to provide, upon vacation, this is a conditional vacation, access gates manned 24/7 at either end of the vacated portion of Laurel Street to control vehicular access. The street is currently 66 feet wide, that's the right-of-way, with the road surface being 36 feet wide, and the parkways where the trees and landscaping are contained are 15 feet wide. We have currently utilities, underground utilities within the area proposed for vacation that includes sanitary sewer, stormwater, potable water, as well as electrical and telecommunications lines. And upon vacation, we will... we will maintain utilities for the easements for these utilities within the proposed vacation. With that, we respectfully recommend your approval of the resolution to vacate Laurel Street within the confines of what's attached in your report.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Golanian. Any questions for Mr. Golanian?
One.
Yes. Mr. Weaver?
No, I just, this is not the sale, then, or is this the vacation?
Just the vacation case, sir.
Just the vacation.
I have a-
Yes, yes, Ms. Friedman?
Are they gonna then get rid of the current toll booth that they have, or whatever you call it, the one that's going into their parking lot?
As Member Friedman, they will relocate that toll booth into the, what's currently Laurel Street entrance.
Well, that's good, because that backs up onto the street quite a bit, so I hope, I mean, I would, if we go for this, I would make that a requirement, that they remove that.
Okay.
That's my only question.
Thank you. We have some speakers. We'll start with Jack Ivey.
Mr. Mayor, have you opened the public hearing?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
Followed by Steve Busseger. I don't know if I got that right.
All right. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, thanks. I'm Jack Ivey, the President of Glendale Memorial-
How much time do you need, Mr. Ivey?
Pardon?
How much time do you need?
Oh, just, just five minutes at the most.
Five minutes, okay.
So I have just brief comments to give the City Councilmembers a little bit more background on this, because we've worked with the city for several months right now on the vacation and how to handle this. But remember, the hospital, and if you look at Laurel Street, if I can point a few things out for you here. This is Central Avenue, this is Brand, and the plan is to vacate along the hospital property line.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay.
Oh, no, we got a portable.
Got a portable.
Okay, thanks.
Then you can walk over to the map.
That's, thanks. This is Central, this is Brand, the hospital here. But I think one thing important to realize about the hospital, medical buildings, 40,000 ER visits. The challenge for our campus is everyone parks on one side of Laurel Street and all the hospital services on the other side. Those are existing conditions. One of the things that brought us to meet with the city is the huge triangle project down by us is opening very soon, and right across where Laurel and Central is, there's a major entrance and exit thoroughfare from the triangle property. So we know, human nature is such that people are gonna be using this as a thoroughfare to cross over to Brand, or when they're returning to their residence, they're gonna come through here. And that's a very, very large property. So we're quite concerned on the traffic growth that's gonna happen in here. As you know, the city's working on a transit zone, and we're part of that transit rezoning down there. And aesthetic improvement is also part of what the city is working on. So as we have this vacation approved, we're gonna turn this into a park-like setting, and we'll have a fountain, some green belts here, some benches for people, and we're also working with City Engineering Department on where we're gonna place these parking kiosks here. So they're far enough recessed away from the insets of where the streets are right now. We do have our neighbor, which is the Mazda property here. We already share an alleyway with them to our planned operations area here right now. But our entrance and exits plan is where the Mazda dealer moves their cars from an adjacent lot back and forth. That movement of traffic does not change. It's still the same as it always is right now. So we have two key themes. One is, we're very worried from the public safety standpoint. We have so many people crossing the street, and with that triangle property opening, that's a major concern. The other thing is, it's an opportunity as we begin our beautification process for the hospital. If we have this closed along the hospital property line, we can really do that beautification piece for the campus, which I think is very important for us, too. In the meantime, trying to keep traffic low for our neighbors along the Brand side of the property. And that's all I'll comment on right now, unless you have questions.
Mr. Weaver?
Question. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir.
Or Rubik? Showing the borders of the vacation, it looks like from Central, it's about 60 feet in. What we're being told, that people are coming out, why wouldn't there be some kind of buffer zone or whatever on the east side of Central, so people wouldn't get in partway and have to do a U-turn and come out? I mean, maybe this is just a vacation. The rest you already own, or?
You wanna, why don't you handle that?
I'm just looking at this map that I just got, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, we will obviously have the corners signed that indicates private property or entrance to the hospital only.
Will this, will this property out here remain public, owned by the city?
The 60 feet?
In here?
Yes.
Okay. Will that be landscaped or anything to send a clear signal that you don't drive in there?
In addition to the signage?
I need you to know, you need access to get in, but will it be more indication than just a sign that a lot of people might not read?
Councilmember, we'll look into possibilities of doing so.
And when you get into the engineering of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver, just one point to add. The hospital will have a policy, a grace period, so that if you did get stuck right here, you didn't see the signs, you didn't know, you could go in, you could make a U-turn, or you could go through.
I meant the west side.
I'm sorry.
Over there.
You could come in, make a U-turn, and go back, all the way through. So there'd be a grace period where you wouldn't have to pay for it.
I just suggest when engineering sits down, analyzes it out, you know, to make sure you got all the safety measures in that you can.
And the alley, can they go take a right in the alley if they make a mistake off of Central, or Brand, I'm sorry?
You could. I don't think we would encourage it, but you could.
Okay, I was wondering.
Yes.
Question. What's the street just north of Laurel?
Los Feliz.
Yeah, this is Los Feliz here.
Okay, if, that diagram is confusing me slightly.
This is the hospital property.
That's the main hospital.
This is the main hospital here, right?
Okay.
So that parking lot-
Feliz is here.
That striped parking lot is actually the top level of the, of the multi-story structure, correct? That's not the-
That's their parking now.
Oh, now it's very-
That's easier.
Oh, that confused.
Yeah.
The hospital on the outside of the parking lot.
Triangle property, of course, is right, right here.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And my only other comment to do, that went next, but we'll keep working with the city engineers, is obviously people will come in here, they may not realize it, but they can enter in the kiosk, and we have turn radiuses here, so people can see. I didn't want to come to the hospital, and they can easily turn out and go out.
Do they have room in the, in the middle of the street to put a sign that says "Hospital Parking Only, No Outlet," kind of the way they do at the hospital, you know, at Glendale Juventus, you know, with their driveway, is a big sign in the middle, so that it's very clear?
We can easily work with city engineering to address that.
This has not been engineered yet, right? You've had discussions in general?
It's not finalized, no.
So when you finalize it, all that kinda stuff be taken into account.
Correct.
Where does one get your parking ticket, at the, on Laurel, or from?
Either way, you can get it on either side.
Up at, on Laurel.
Yes, on Laurel, either side, coming in from the Brand or the Central entrance.
Okay. But you're gonna remove the existing kiosk, right?
Correct, yes. The existing kiosk is here that you're coming in, that will be gone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ivey.
Thank you.
And next speaker is Steve Busseger, followed by Mark Castro.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council and city, my name is Steve Busseger. I'm a resident of Glendale, a property owner in Glendale, and owner of Star Mazda, which is the business that's gonna be affected here. One of the, I guess the first thing that bothers me is that I wasn't brought in, and nobody on my staff was brought in, in the planning of this closing of the street. It's obviously gonna affect my business. We use that alley, we share it with the hospital, but outside the back of that alley is the exit from my service, service department. So people are gonna drive down, they're gonna see the gate, they're gonna make a right turn into the alley, and the amount of traffic in the alley is gonna be probably doubled from what it is right now.
Which is what I just said.
Another concern I have, Ms. Friedman brought up, is there's exactly space for three parkings, for three cars to park before you block that alley, and I'm confused on, now that they turned it.
I know. I think it's more confusing that way, too.
You better turn it the other way.
But if you, if you come off of Los Feliz and go to go in, you have exactly a space for three cars to park before you're blocking the alley. And the alley is what I use to go in. That's the only way in and out of the back of my building. In addition to that, this prop, you can point it out, Mark, where we park the cars.
Now it's obsolete.
Well, it got Central over here, so here's the alley that we're referring to here.
Yes.
And as you can see, there's a place for two cars here. So if they put this proposed booth here, they're gonna block the alley, and they're gonna block their own driveway, which is where patients come in and out and get dropped off. So not more than one car can be at the toll booth at any given time, before you start blocking this entrance, and then you start blocking the alley.
Just for the record, Mark, you're Matt, Mark Castro?
He's Mark Castro, yes.
So we can combine our time, if that's fine. If not, I'll take my time.
You better get the mic.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
You better get the mic over there.
Could I ask a question about what you just said? Would that be alleviated if they just moved that booth? Because there's no reason, I think, that they couldn't move that booth for another 20 minutes, right?
That was one of the things that was talked about. I don't see it happening here.
Oh, so there's no, there's no, they don't, there's no guard there, on that side?
No.
Right, of course, because they're going in.
No, there's no guard there.
Okay.
But, but anytime there's more than three cars waiting to get in, I can't go across the street or in and out of that alley.
Here's a way, showing that space, and I'm sure your staff would be able to zoom in.
If you take a look at, at the way my store's situated, what I have is, is, where's the store?
Yeah, he hasn't turned upside down now.
All right. I have, I have a storage parking lot on one side of Laurel, and my store's on the other side of Laurel.
Here's the store.
And, and we go, we take cars from that parking lot across into the alley and into the back of the service department. So any more than three cars that are parked there are gonna affect, are gonna affect whether I can get in and out of, A, my service department, the alley lot on the other side of Laurel. So-
You don't mean parked, right? You mean just waiting to get a ticket?
Correct, correct.
I think parked, but people aren't parking there.
No, we have a storage facility.
No, we have a storage facility on the other side of Laurel.
But you're parking there.
So we're constantly going across, back and forth across the street. Yeah. Across Laurel.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. You said cars parked there. Are you parking cars there?
Yes, we have parking cars there.
Are you submitting those photos for the record?
Yes. You can take a look here. You can pass it down to.
Slam dunk.
See the backside where the physician's entrance now, which is this entrance here.
Well, this, this, this doesn't show our store here. But the storage lot is right there at the very, at the top.
Sorry, I was thinking about parking cars. Where are you, where are you parking?
Right there.
You're saying if there's more than three cars in there, there's a problem?
No.
That's across the street.
No, there.
Right there.
But there, are there cars parking there on the street?
Well, right now there are, yes.
The picture's upside down. Your south is north.
Yeah, maybe it's upside down, yeah. Are you worried, are you talking about cars that are waiting to just get their ticket and go in, or people parking there? That's what I'm confused about.
It's an adjacent parking lot to the facility.
Two different, two different subjects.
More than three cars are parked in that parking lot?
No, if more than three cars are waiting to get a ticket-
Waiting here. Okay. And in line.
Okay, it imped, it impedes the alley.
I understand. You keep saying more than three cars parked, so.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. If there's more than three cars waiting to get in.
Okay.
Okay. If there's more than three cars waiting to get in, it's going to impede the alley.
Okay.
We also park cars on that piece of property that's, it's right here.
This piece here.
Okay.
And so we have to take cars from that lot there into the alley, or into our, we have to be able to have access to get in and out of that, that lot there.
Okay.
So that's a concern. The other concern I have is, we, rather than, if we, if we wanna get out of our service department, okay, we have, we go down Laurel Street all the time, our mechanics and when we're testing cars or anything else. We use that street to get, so we can make right turns instead of left-hand turns. Because if we make a left-hand turn, we end up on Brand Boulevard, which is obviously busy, and we have to make a left-hand turn across traffic. So rather than do that, we go down Laurel and make right-hand turns.
Or you could turn right and go around the block.
That's a good subject. Except for the next street to make a right turn on is closed because the hospital closed that street, you know, for, for safety issues there, too.
To go another block.
So we have to go all the, almost down to San Fernando Road, yes. Okay, so those are, those are some of the concerns. Out the back of the alley there, my fear is that, well, I know it's gonna happen. As soon as somebody makes, goes to go down Laurel, they're gonna see they can't go down, and they're gonna end up going down that alley. I have employees on the other side of that alley, which doesn't show here, which we have pictures of. On, my business is here, my service parking lot is here, the alley runs between it. So I have employees going out the back of the service department to go get cars to go and fix them, and they have to cross that alley. If you increase the traffic on that alley more than it is right now, talk about a safety concern. It's gonna be terrible.
Mr. Busseger?
Yes.
Do you have much more left? Because you've been-
How much time you got?
You had a lot of time.
So, but those are, those are my concerns there. That, and, and I think there's other options. I mean, they're talking about safety. It's not gonna be any safer. I mean, there's already speed bumps there. People just freely walk across that street. There's been no attempt to control the pedestrian traffic to make them cross at a crosswalk or anything else, so.
So it ends up being, you don't want any closure, because you need all of-
Well, I just wanna say, it's gonna inconvenience me as a businessperson, and it's gonna be an inconvenience to my business.
And the hospital is just the opposite.
And if I had my choice, I would not have that street closed.
Is it put up for closure, or is it gonna be open to the public? Because I, we heard two different things. When the hospital first approached us a week ago, this was supposed to be left open so that the public could come through it. Now we're, we're talking about a private street. So is it gonna be a private street, or is it gonna be a public street?
Well, we-
Confused.
The street's gonna be vacated.
It's gonna be vacated.
Right, and be sold to the hospital. So this gentleman explained to us in our meeting that the public can still go through with a 15-minute grace period, so the public could continue to use the street.
What?
No, I don't think that's what we-
I'm confused. Is, is there someone here from planning that might be able to address that issue for us?
Let's, let's limit the comments, yeah. So, yes, Mr. Ivey, respond, please.
Mr. Mayor, is this gonna be one of the things where we have to take off calendar to have, straighten this off? No?
All right. I have solutions, not comments. We can easily move the parking kiosk on the Laurel side farther down. There's a concern that have three cars waiting to get a ticket. We can easily move that farther in on Laurel to solve that problem on there. And then anyone can come through this. It's a grace period, yes. They actually could actually still come through here, take a ticket, and they could go all the way through and exit and go out on Central Avenue if they wanted. So, I mean-
Take it, and you drive and the ticket in.
Yes. So there's still gonna be a flow through there, or they can just do a quick turnaround. So I don't think getting in and out of the parking is gonna be problematic.
It's not definitive.
Yeah. Well, it's not finalized yet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Castro, please don't interrupt. Please don't speak out of-
Well, I was-
No, I know, but you've had plenty of opportunity to speak. He's responding to your question.
And my only other comment, too, is, as far as how they use the adjacent lot to move cars in and out, that's an existing condition. That doesn't change, because none of where we street, have the street vacation, that way of going in and out remains exactly the way it is today, right now. Nothing changes on that. So that's just part of how they have overflow parking. But where we vacate the street, it doesn't impact that, that flow across Laurel, because the street vacation is farther in from that. So I think a lot of this can be resolved, so some of these flow issues can minimize their concern at the Mazda dealer, as we work with city engineers to finalize.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. We have another speaker.
Just, just to finish.
Please, please wrap it up, though.
All right. My biggest concern is the increase in traffic going down that alley. And, and that's a safety concern to my business.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks for that. Next, we have Miles Wallen. How much time do you need, Mr. Wallen?
Oh, I imagine about five minutes would be sufficient.
All right, five minutes.
I'm glad that Mr. Busseger has raised some of the issues regarding this vacation, and I'd like to express to the council my deep disappointment in how this has been handled, because this is the first time that anyone has had an opportunity for a public hearing. And we progressed to this point where you're making decisions tonight regarding the vacation of this with no input from the public. And I find that- And I find that very distressing. And I'm sure that in past activities that I've had with the city, if your staff has worked efficiently, effectively, and expeditiously, but in this one, they blew it. And to me, it should never have happened that these, what's being discussed here should always rather be concluded and finalized and everyone knew what was gonna happen. But here we are back debating the issue and seeing what's the best interest of getting this done. Now, I happen to own the property at 114 and 120 West Laurel with my wife. We've owned that property and been involved with it since 1950 when we were first married. We've seen a lot happen. A lot happened. We remember the day when the city sponsored an ambulance, they used to go down Laurel there with sirens on and they'd go into the physician's and surgeon's emergency room there. We remember those days. They had a fire alarm on civil defense on, and Fire Station Number Two was at the Red Cross site there that was overlayed from the World War. And they used to send that off from time to time. So we've seen a lot of progress in those years. And now we have this where you want to close the street and our access to now, to Central is no longer available to us. That lot will be outside where the proposed, proposed kiosk is going to be, but still, if I want access to my property from Central, I will be refused. And I think that's wrong. That property's had access to Central Street for 100 years, and for this to come in and put up this kind of thing for supposedly traffic control and pedestrian safety, I think is really noble and should be considered, but they, the, the point is, we really don't know how many accidents we've had there. Nothing from the Glendale Police Department about the priority of this is. And to me, it's all premature for you to enter into an approved this vacation without all this being put to bed. And it's unfortunately that a public hearing at this magnitude, that you people have to spend time on something like this, it's regrettable to me that, that your time has, has to be spent on something like this. It should be done in the planning department who only approved, if you look at your information, that it was appropriate, that it meant the, I think, the circulation element of your general plan or whatever it was, and that's all they did. They never had any public hearing on it. Never. And I don't think that's the way to conduct business in this city. The other point I want to say is that I, I could occur on this turnaround thing. If there's one there in front of my property, I'm not sure where it's gonna be, I heard all kinds of statements where it might be, but it will back up possibly entering my property. And you must understand, it's only a parking lot now. It's, it's zoned for higher and better use. And someday, they may well, that may well occur. That property should have access to Central Avenue. And so with that, all I can say is rather than hassle over all this, I think you should return this to the planning council, planning commission, and have them conduct a proper hearing and, and proper evaluation of all these things and make recommendations to you people how this should proceed. To me, it's just way too early to start finalize these things with already you taking a resolution, you're gonna vacate it. I think that's very inappropriate. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wallen.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Well, thanks for coming. It's nice to meet you. So it sounds like they're allowing people to go through. You would have to take the ticket, which is sort of inconvenient, but you wouldn't have to pay. Is that...
I, I, I don't know. It's all, it's all talk.
But if that's true, and, and if we condition it, does that address some of your concerns?
I don't know. I'd have to see it in writing what you're telling me, Mrs. Friedman. And all this verbiage stuff, I don't go over...
No, no, I, I understand that, but if we make that a condition of this to where they have to do it, does that address your concerns?
It could.
It could, okay.
I, I, I would want to commit myself in that I really understand what it's gonna be, Mrs. Friedman, and, and it's, it's premature.
So your property right now is a parking lot, but you want to maybe eventually develop...
It has a, a zone for medical services, which includes a doctor's office, for example.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm saying it has access...
Might have attacked a fire and police services, I don't know. Better watch out.
Well, whatever it is, it has all kinds of services involved, and I just say doctor's offices is one I use as an example. And access from Central to be that it has now should be maintained.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir.
What do you have to say about that?
Well, I just, in the interest of resetting the topic, because a lot has been said, when you look at, at what it is that we're proposing, we spent this afternoon talking about the desire of our medical, our hospitals to cluster around and create campuses that would further improve and aggregate the, the amount of business that they do because that is something that's very important to our local economy, as is the Bran Boulevard of cars. There's no two ways about it. But I do believe that the vacation and the creation of this campus environment furthers that goal of helping Memorial Hospital just the way that Adventist does up in, in the central part of the city. Thus, when you look at what the vacation is and the detail that was provided, you see a couple of things. The queuing of about three to four cars, as it's shown there, is for the ingress, not the egress, where people tend to back up because they didn't get a validation or they're paying with a card or they don't have the right amount or whatever, and that starts to back up. But that won't back up into the public right-of-way as it's, as it's determined here or impact the alleyway, which is also, for the record, a public alleyway. And folks are doing business on that public alleyway, which we, you know, God bless them, they're doing work that is generating revenue for us. But the point is that it's a public alleyway, meaning that it belongs to the public. The idea that we would have this as the ingress means that if you've ever been to the Americana, where it is extraordinarily busy, it is very few and far between instances where you will have the ingress into that parking structure. I use this as, as an example of a very, very busy or, uh, parking structure. Very rarely do you see that those parking kiosks are backed up three and four cars deep because all you're doing is hitting the button and, and you're going in. I don't see that the level of impact that is being described here is going to occur on this street. Secondly, as was confused a, a bit there, two things, I suppose. Uh, one, that, as Mr. Lanzarote had indicated, you will have a 15-minute grace period. So if you make a mistake and enter this area by mistake, or if it is just expedience that drives you through there, you enter, say, on Central, hit the button, get a ticket, drive straight through to the other side, and you give that ticket within that 15-minute window and you do not pay. Now, that's not ideal, that's not what the intention of this is, but is it possible? Sure. And is that Memorial Hospital wanting to be a good neighbor with everyone around there? Sure. And so that issue, as described by Mrs. Friedman, is exactly what has been contemplated. And the reason why you haven't had this public hearing before is, quite frankly, this is the public hearing. This is what is required by law when considering it. So the idea that we should have had more public hearings, I guess you can continue to have public meetings, but to the extent that this is not an extraordinarily complicated vacation case and that the council gets to decide, particularly when you consider that the traffic counts that we have on Laurel Street are minimal. They're minimal. We would not recommend to you vacating Laurel Street if, in fact, it was a heavily traveled thoroughfare. It's not. Mr. Golanian can speak to that. To the extent that we believe that the queuing will not be an impact, to the extent that we have condition for Memorial Hospital to be that good neighbor, I think this is very unremarkable in every way except that it allows Memorial Hospital to further grow and develop as a campus.
I have a question for Mr. Golanian. Is there a reason, since they have the concern about people blocking that alleyway entrance, whether it's misplaced or not, to move that, does it, is there a problem with moving that, that guardhouse up one spot? Or is it just, does that just make their, sort of the street too short for what they want?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, technically, there should not be a problem, but as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, the, the problem, the queuing problem usually occurs on the egress when folks are trying to pay for the ticket and get out. So that may create a, a back, backup queuing when folks are trying to egress.
But as Mr. Ivy indicated, if it's the council's pleasure to move that one further west, I think we can do that, Mr., to move where Mr. Lanzarote was indicating there, to move that further west if it makes everyone feel better outside of the vacation area. But as Mr. Golanian indicates, all that does is make for a shorter egress queue, but it's the council's call.
What if we move it up just by one car? Instead of three cars, it's four cars. If three cars isn't a problem, four, for sure it shouldn't be a problem.
You would hope and expect.
Yeah, I mean, the only issue is that then it, you know, they're trying to create this park-like setting, then you're sort of ruining that.
Right, then you're ruining that, yes.
If I, if I may add to what Mr. Ochoa had mentioned about the traffic counts, what we counted for 24 hours, the, the highest peak time, uh, traffic vehicular count were westbound from Central to Bran between 8:40, it happened between 8:45 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., that was 42 vehicles within a 15-minute period. And we've also measured how long it takes for the, the guard or the arm to process entering into the street or passing through, and that takes just over nine seconds. Let's say, be conservative and assume it's 10 seconds. So within a 15-minute period, we should be able to process 90 vehicles through there. And our worst-case scenario, westbound from Bran to Central is 42 vehicles.
So assuming that this gentleman wants to develop his property, assuming that the council allows development, is that gonna be a problem for him and his property? I mean, is, is this going to be something that's gonna impact anything that he wants to put there?
Not knowing what it would be that he would propose, it's hard to answer that question as a hypothetical.
Would we have the opportunity ever to take this street back or is this permanent, forever kind of thing?
Through eminent domain, you can condemn a right-of-way for yourself. I don't know that we believe that this would actually be necessary by virtue of the type of vacation that you're looking at.
I'm just, you know, he's got a concern that if he wants to develop something, someone is gonna say, you can't develop this now because you don't have a, you know, the throughway to the street, or that it'll just impede his ability to develop, so, which is a reasonable concern.
Surely.
So I'm, I'm wondering if, if we would say that to him down the line or if this would be a, a problem for him to put a medical building or a housing project or whatever he wants to put on the site.
You, you draw a good example. If he were to put up a medical building, if he were to sell to the hospital at some point, or, or he was going to put something that's compatible use for that, for that campus, he may want to move the guard shack further and be, further east and be enveloped into it and, and allow the vacation of that piece of property. So I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I believe that, that certainly he's within his rights to ask the question of what happens when I want to develop my property. I don't see that anything you're doing today is going to necessarily preclude or prohibit the future enjoyment of that property, or we wouldn't be recommending it to you. I certainly would defer to the city attorney, but that would not be an indication, a, a situation that we're contemplating here by virtue of this vacation. Now, to Mr., to the mayor's point, you could also, at the same time, uncouple the ingress and egress arms and push the ingress arm further west to give you that one extra car length and keep the egress arm where it is here so that you don't, I mean, all those things are truly possible. Again, this is a very, not a very difficult piece of engineering.
Why don't we do that? Mr. Lanzarote, you wanted to add something?
I was just going to add that this street is designated as a local street, and local streets by our code, I'm, I'm getting into dangerous territory pretending I know all of this, but in our, our local code, in our code, a local street serves the adjacent property owners. So there really is never anticipated through traffic on Laurel because it doesn't go anywhere. It specifically does for Mr. Busseger, who's, you know, going around the block on purpose. But for the general public, Laurel Street is serving those on either side. The lot would still, if it were developed, it would still have access from Bran Boulevard and generally from San Fernando Road. One thing to add that was talked about, the Triangle site, when we looked at that, again, we had the same concept of this is a local street, not to be used as cut-through traffic. I mean, that's one of the purposes in our circulation element, one of the goals. We specifically did not use Laurel Street for any traffic in our study and found that Central, Los Feliz, and San Fernando could handle all of that traffic.
No, so they have a crosswalk somewhere in there? Is that what I'm seeing in the middle?
Yes.
Because right now, people are just jaywalking to get to the hospital.
No, no, there's an auditorium over on that side and then...
Sorry?
Entrance into the hospital, yeah, it's...
The crosswalk and people use that and...
Use it many times.
But they are walking across the street, outside of the crosswalk.
I've done that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, but they are jaywalking.
Because there's no traffic.
Councilmember Friedman, people who don't use the crosswalk, jaywalk.
I'm not, hey, I'm not criticizing anyone, I'm just asking the question. So that's something that we're trying to cure here, is to make it to where...
That's one of the reasons, yeah.
They have, so there's a new crosswalk being put in, is my question. Or just clarifying?
Yes.
Yes, they're nodding, okay.
Mr. Najarian?
So are we losing any street parking or is it entirely red-curved at the moment?
Entirely red-curved.
Except for that, well...
I mean...
There's yellow curbs in the back between the alley and there...
Mazda where the, yeah.
Well, uh, drop-off, there are drop-off zones, but there is no parking.
Parking in front of Miles.
Parking, I've tried.
But in the area where the vacation is delineated...
Councilmember Najarian, within the proposed vacation area, there are drop-off zones, but no permanent parking.
Then my last question is, is there a way to condition that they allow that 15-minute grace period?
I'd have to defer to city attorney. I would imagine that we could condition that, but I want to play the attorney.
As part of the sale, we can ask that they accept a condition as part of the grant deed. That would be a, a component of that transaction.
Does it seem that that addresses some of the concerns of the business owners? That if they really want to, they can go through there?
That and, and also extending it to the ingress to four car lengths as opposed to three.
They could also accept a covenant that would serve that purpose. There are a variety of ways that we could address that issue with the, in the transaction.
So we're dealing with the vacation right now only. I own that note. Want to, just a public hearing, we're gonna close then. We need, we need a motion, an ordinance?
Well, I would want to have that condition, however, it's achieved that, so that the property owners can pass through, you know, the business owners and the public, to have that 15-minute grace period. I don't think the general public will do it because you'll have signage saying that there's no in and out, but the, the business owners will know that they can go through. And to move that...
For the extra spot.
In the brass, one extra spot so that it addresses the concern about blocking the alley. That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second.
Comment on my part, I listen to these two speakers say they have not been involved in any of this. That is troubling to me. Um, you know, we've been sitting here doing engineering, traffic engineering here. I don't know why I assumed everything had been talked out until we got here. I don't know yet what the correct answer is. If you want to put it there, I wouldn't even have a guard. I'd do what you have at the Americana. Take a ticket, if you shop there or if you're less than 90 minutes, you put in the exit and you're out free. Why do you need somebody working the gates? Maybe there's a reason that, you know, you, you can handle it a different way.
Maybe there's a reason, but, you know, you can handle it a different way. Somebody coming in, puts it in, gets the ticket, goes to the other end, takes a minute or two, and he goes out the other end. Don't need a body, but I'm just troubled with, it doesn't feel like it's been totally coordinated the right way. I think when the Triangle project goes in, again, it's residential for the most part. You're not going to have residents coming in and hot-tailing it across Laurel Street to go in. I assume you're talking about a signalization at that exit? Are we? Signalization from the Triangle project? How are they going to get across Central? Gun it and hope they get across with no traffic?
Mr. Golanian?
I didn't know there was, I didn't remember where the exit from the Triangle project was. They say it's right across the street from Laurel. Now, if that's true, then how are they going to get across? There's no, are you putting a traffic signal there? It's too close to Los Feliz.
Councilmember Weaver, no, there won't be a signalized driveway egress-ingress onto Central, but it's fairly close to the corner of San Fernando and Central, and all of that, the entire Triangle is being signalized with new traffic signal systems.
So if they're exiting on the Central, where is that? Further down?
Yes. It's not, it's not right across Laurel.
Okay, so they would have to jog up and go through. Now, see, I'm sitting here trying to understand the whole area. I don't understand it, and I, I think people were left out of it. I mean, I'm all for the hospital, too, because I sat here and voted for the closure of the other street, which is now a nice part of the campus. Not to say I won't now, but I don't have a comfort zone with everybody that should have been involved in this, knowing about it. It's not as straightforward as it looks to me.
I would submit to you, sir, that we did have this on the calendar last month, as you recall. Folks who were out of town when the notice went out asked that it be postponed. It was postponed until for this three weeks, I guess it's been, maybe a bit longer, and we have had a number of meetings and conversations with folks.
Really? Well, Starford's been involved.
That's why I say, Mr. Weaver, when this was on the agenda last month, we pulled it back, and then we met with Starford, Star Mazda, and had conversations with the property owner between last meeting and this one here.
Okay, so they have been involved?
No, we're not involved.
Ms. Sanchez, have we had any discussions with folks?
Yes, we've, I've spoken with Mr. Wollam a couple of times over the phone, as well as Bill Ahern and our Public Works Department. We've spoken a number of times. Over the last two or three.
About weeks, about weeks ago? How about weeks ago?
It was, the, a meeting was noticed.
When you first contemplated closing down Laurel, where all the neighbors contacted and meetings set up at that time, which was more than a month ago, two months, three months, I've heard about this coming up.
Correct. The property owners were notified prior to the public hearing, yes.
This is supposed to be the public hearing, but how far back was it? The conceptual state, the first thing you had to hear is from the hospital that proposed to close it. We took it on, did we notify all the neighbors at that time?
We did not during the planning stage. We notified of the hearing, and that's when there was the concern that was raised, and we pulled the hearing off of the agenda to conduct those meetings.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the matter was heard by the Planning Commission October 1st, 2014.
It was...
It was noticed, hearing on the proposed vacation.
To the neighbors.
It would have been a Brown Act noticed meeting. Brown Act notice.
Okay, well, we have a, we, thank you, Mr. Weaver, for your concerns. I think those are legitimate concerns. We have a motion and a second, so I'm just going to call for a...
And it's, the only thing that's going to be involved here is moving that gate?
No, moving that gate and also a guarantee, that's, we're giving it up subject to the guarantee that if you're just passing through a 15-minute waiver period...
But we're not going to move the gate?
We are going to move it.
We are going to move it.
One car length more?
One car length, yeah.
Those are conditions we're putting on.
Yes.
And that's going to solve all the problems.
I think that solves a lot of the reasonable concerns.
Okay, we'll sure find out, won't we?
Okay.
Does that reduce the size of the vacation if we move it one?
Yeah.
Necessarily. Keep the boundaries as is?
Keep the boundaries.
This vacation is conditioned upon the execution of the grant deed, so that's why I indicated before that the conditions can be either incorporated as covenants in the grant deed or recorded separately as an instrument against the property.
Okay. Okay, hey, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Reluctantly, yes.
Kirsten Anian?
Yes. Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
On this particular agenda, this was the only item. However, there is a related item on a separate agenda.
Okay, well, we, yeah, thank you.
Second.